Councilmember Maria Buchanan Jr.
Present.
Councilmember Africa Luna Carrasco. Councilmember Jose Ponce.
Present.
Councilmember Matias Rosales. Councilmember Gloria Torres.
Present.
Vice Mayor Maria Cecilia Cruz.
Present.
Mayor Gerardo Sanchez.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. We are, let's see here. We're, go ahead, pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Buchanan, could you lead us with the pledge of allegiance, please?
Sure, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the fact that we are the state of America. And to the republic from which this stands, one nation, in God, in this world, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mario. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Father, we take this time to just pause and lift up our nation to you amidst all of the turmoil, chaos, pandemics, jobs that are lost. Lord, we just pray that you would bring comfort to our nation. And, Lord, during these times of elections, that you would give us clarity of mind. Lord, across this country, and that peace would be restored at your will. But we also pray for our community as well. We thank you for the tasks that you have given us to make decisions for our community, for our residents. We thank you for their sacrifices that they make each and every day. And we pray, Lord, that as a council, that we would be able to look at their interests and decide on the issues that really benefit them. Father, tonight, we pray for wisdom and ask you to guide us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, chief. We are gonna go, go ahead with the proclamation. Sonia, por favor.
Yes, Mayor. National Custodial Workers' Recognition Day, October 2, 2020. Whereas custodial workers work behind the scenes and are often unappreciated for the hard work that they do day after day, keeping schools, hospitals, office buildings, museums, churches, etc. Yes, sir. Churches, etc., clean and well-maintained. Whereas these people are an important part of the success of many businesses as a clean, well-maintained, and an operation building is a reflection of the business itself. Whereas the city's facilities department always strive to keep the city's buildings and offices well-maintained and cleaned. Now, therefore, Gerardo Sanchez, Mayor of the City of San Luis, hereby proclaims October 2, 2020, as National Custodial Workers' Recognition Day, thanking and recognizing the hard work of the city's facilities department and custodians throughout this municipality. Passed and adopted this 23rd date of September, 2020.
Thank you, Sonia. I just want to say a word real quick regarding our custodians or our facilities department. One of the things that I would like to personally thank is every single person that works for facility. During the COVID situation, well, we're still in the COVID pandemic, but during in the deepest or the hardest part, whenever there was a positive case or in the city, there's always, there was always the facilities group who actually came in and made sure that the area was sanitized properly. I saw several times, several of our custodians sanitizing city hall and doing everything they did. They were wearing their masks or they're wearing their protective gear, and I am so grateful for everything they do and they've done and still continue doing. The facilities department is so important, especially for the city. And not only that, but I also see at the clinic, at the hospital, those people who, for example, when we were seeing positive COVID patients, every single time they would clean before and after a patient was seen, and it's just they, they had fear in their eyes, but they did their work. And my heart goes to them and to all the custodians and facilities employees. Gracias for everything you do. It's something, we always talk about the first responders being our fire, our police, our medical providers, but the people behind the scenes, the people that make sure that we're safe. And when we sit, that it's clean and it's sanitized, and I am so grateful for our group and for facilities. And so, gracias, bendiga. I really, I really am very grateful for everything you do. So, thank you so much in behalf of the city, in behalf of my office, we have a city council. We are so proud of you. So, I just wanted to say that. So, thank you. We're gonna go ahead and, go ahead and go with the consent agenda. All matters are considered routine by city council, if an active motion, a discussion desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Minutes of work session held August 19, 2020, regular council meeting held August 22, 26, 2020. Total disbursements was $761,474.16. I will now retain a motion.
I'm ready.
Everyone's on mute?
Mayor, I make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
There's a motion on the floor. There's a second. Thank you. And all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is against? Motion carries. Thank you. We're gonna go ahead with the discussion and possible action items. Item number 6A, discussion and possible action on all matters regarding Resolution Number 2140, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of San Luis Obispo, approving an amendment, addendum to the intergovernmental agreement between the City of San Luis and the Yuma County for the purpose of providing mandatory field training. I guess, Naomi, our judge, is here?
He's coming to the podium. Good evening, everyone.
Judge?
I'm sorry. Yes. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Thank you. Buenas tardes.
Thank you. And we are addressing Resolution 2140, Mayor?
Uh huh. And this is regarding an intergovernmental agreement between the City of San Luis and Yuma County for mandatory field training? What mandatory field training are we talking about, Judge?
Mandatory field training as ordered by the Arizona Supreme Court. There is an individual in charge that certifies or trains all court employees through Yuma County. And he's responsible for providing training. We've been doing this sort of training for years. And he's available all year round for any questions. Trainings that we need as ordered by the court, and it saves the court and the city money rather than having employees travel to Phoenix or other places. This employee, the trainer, is responsible for being certified and acquiring the information to train all of court employees through Yuma County.
Oh, that's nice. So, he not only trains our municipality, but also other courts in Yuma County?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, good. And this is for a period of one year?
One year, yes.
And, let's see here. And he only charges $1,000? Or?
Yes, because every other court is responsible for providing their share of the fee. And I believe this is part of already of our budget. I believe it's already budgeted, but we just have to go before council because it is in an IGA.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Okay, good. I'm gonna go and open the floor to any questions or concerns. Let's see here. Africa Luna Carrasco, questions or concerns?
None, Mayor.
Thank you. Matias Rosales, any questions or concerns?
None, Mayor.
Thank you. Mario Buchanan Jr., any questions or concerns?
No, Mayor. No questions.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, any questions or concerns?
None, Mayor.
Thank you. Gloria Torres, any questions or concerns?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Jose Ponce, any questions or concerns?
None, Mayor.
Thank you so much. If not, I will now retain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to move to adopt and approve Resolution Number 2140 as presented.
Second. There's a motion on the floor. There's a second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is against? Motion carries. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Oh, you said one more item. Okay. We're gonna go ahead and go under item number 6B, discussion of action on all matters regarding Resolution 2141, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the City of San Luis approving, addendum to the intergovernmental agreement between the City of San Luis, Arizona, and Yuma County for the purpose of providing mandatory weekend and holiday court services for the San Luis Municipal Court. Judge?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. And this is just an addendum to the resolution. This IGA is, we do it every four years, but in the meantime, we go before council to let council know this is how much it's owed to the court for weekend coverage and holiday coverage for the judge. And so, it's backdated for last year. And it's, it's just the addendum to the resolution, to the IGA already in place that we have with Yuma County Superior Court.
Okay, good. And let's see here. Judge, have you had any problems with coverage on the weekends by any chance?
None at all. No, there is three judges assigned to coverage and they rotate, but that's their job. They're, they're not pro temps. They're, they're part of the, the pro temp, they're part of the judges for Superior Court.
Okay, good. I just wanna make sure if there's ever any issues. But then again, we're only limited to what we can do, but we can actually do campaign attention and actually bring this notice to someone.
Yes.
So, thank you.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, please, Judge.
And this IGA actually covers our court in the event that there is not coverage. This covers our municipality and our court because we have an IGA saying we're paying you every year to have coverage. So, this is the responsibility of Superior Court.
Okay. Very good. I like that. I'm gonna go and open the floor to any comments or questions. Councilmember Mario Buchanan Jr., any questions, concerns?
No, Mayor. No questions.
Okay, good. Let's see. Africa Luna Carrasco, questions or concerns?
None, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Matia Rosales, questions or concerns?
None, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, comments, questions or concerns?
None, Mayor.
Thank you. Gloria Torres, any questions or concerns?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Jose Ponce, comments, questions or concerns?
No, sir.
Thank you. If not, I will now retain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt and approve Resolution Number 2141. Understand it?
Second, Mayor.
There's a motion on the floor. There's a second. All is in favor?
Aye.
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 All is against? Motion carries. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Let's see here. Item number 6C, discussion and possible action on any and all matters regarding Resolution 2142, resolution of the mayor, city council of the City of San Luis Obispo, ratifying and improving the creation of positions in classified services of the city, amending the classification and services plan of the cities, or supersending any conflict provisions, existing regulations or policies providing for some ability and declaring an emergency. Okay?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Can you hear me okay through the mask?
Yes, yes.
Okay, good, good. This resolution is just sort of a cleanup resolution. There were four positions created. An executive assistant, a governmental foreign affairs coordinator, a paralegal, and a records management specialist. They're all filled except for the records management specialist, for the, which was approved by council at the retreat. It's for the clerk's office. And the paralegal position is a new position, but it isn't a new personnel. It's Sylvia in the prosecutor's office. So, this is just to make sure that these positions make it into our classified service and the pay grades. And so, that's, that's its function.
Exactly. Okay, very good.
All of the positions have been budgeted appropriately, so this is just to get it into classified service.
Okay. Okay, I have a question regarding the paralegal. She's not only, she's not only a paralegal, but she's also the receptionist secretary, executive assistant for the prosecutor also?
Yes, she's doing it all right now, yes.
Yeah, I figured. Yeah, no, no. And the thing is, yeah, having a paralegal is so, so important in that area. So, no, that's good. I'm happy to hear that. Okay. The records management, why are we having problems with record management? I believe they needed a lot of help.
Yes, she's going through the process right now of recruitment and all that. And this was one of the steps, she wanted to make sure that it was in the classified service before she started.
Okay, it's very important, because they need the help. They really need the help. Okay, good. That's, that's the main questions I had. I'm gonna go ahead and open the floor for any questions or concerns. Mario Buchanan Jr., any questions or concerns?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Africa Luna Carrasco, questions or concerns?
None, Mayor.
Thank you. Matia Rosales, questions or concerns?
None, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, questions or concerns?
None, Mayor.
Gloria Torres, questions or concerns?
Yes, I do have a concern. I remember that I asked K, I don't know, months ago, two months ago, I don't know when, that I asked for several positions, that it was a position that it would be classified, that position that we should be, should we take it to the council, and they, they already did it. I, I think if there's a position that we had to, they had to take it to us, they had to take it to us, not approve it of like the administrator. I mean, the administrator doesn't have to create a position and get it with that consent of the council.
Okay, and, okay, go on ahead.
Yes, I do remember that call. I think it might have been as early as before the retreat. And I wasn't, I did see, when you pointed it out, I did see it in the budget, but I didn't realize that it wasn't in the classified service. And so, now it's all come together when, when the, now that we have an HR director and all these things in place, we're trying to be more careful about not letting those things slip through.
Top, if I may add, to further clarify, these positions were included in your budget books, so they're there. However, they were not part of the official list of positions that we have in the city, but they were included in the budget. So, it was, they were approved through the budget process. The government and foreign affairs coordinator was approved for the second time this last budget year. And the records management specialist is before you because the duties were changed through the process, if I'm correct, Sonia? So, it went from records management coordinator to specialist. So, the positions were budgeted for, were approved by council during the budget, and we're just adding them to the long list of positions that we have in our, in our list of positions with our pay scale.
Classified, sorry.
Classified. So, but yeah, they were approved by council before we did it.
But I remember today that we have that retreat, it wasn't in our binder. And it's in our binder, it was already the executive assistants, it was already in the binder, and it was not approved yet. It was already there, like it was an executive, the executive assistant. That's why, that's why I asked K day before, so I don't know.
Well, to, to clarify anything, council does not create, for example, we don't, we don't approve positions. The only, the only positions we approve are the chief of police, the fire, and the city attorney. We approve a budget for the whole, for the whole city. We don't, we don't approve or disapprove. Administration creates positions based on the needs.
So, so, so just tell me that the administrator should take whatever he wants to put in and create a position.
It's not, Gloria, it's based on need. This position was not created overnight.
But I think it was created because he was just moving from one side to another.
It was in your budget? For example, the government affairs coordination administration, for two years I've been asking for that. Because Francia cannot do their job by herself. For two years I've been asking for it. For the past two, two, two years I've been asking for it.
Also, so that, that means the governance affairs and coordinator is, is with Francia's because she has too many, it's too much work for her?
The job is becoming overwhelming. The job is becoming overwhelming for her, yes.
Oh my God. Okay, okay. Good answers. Thank you.
Any else?
I agree with you, Mayor. The position, the positions, I saw them in the budget retreat, and we approved it in the budget part as well. And there are certain positions, like that position for governance coordinator was needed to be able to alleviate the workload that, that one person may have. But yeah, I mean, it gets added to the budget, to the binder, we review it. We, we don't want it, we take it out, we go over, and then we approve the budget, so. I mean, I get the process, and I know we've been asking for it for two, three years, like the record management specialist. I think we've been asking for that one for four years. I mean, luckily we're able to put it in this budget year and help out the workload for the employees.
And, and our prosecutor has been asking for a paralegal for two years now. This is the second year he asked for it. These positions were not created overnight.
Yeah.
And they have been included in the budget. And, and again, they're created by city code. And like Kay said, we're trying to be, to streamline the process. They were not part of our salary scale. And now if we approve this resolution, they will be.
As an emergency.
This particular one, we do have to go backwards and ratify. But going forward, we want to make sure that when these are created, we'll also bring to council the change to the classified service and the pay grades.
But they were, they were approved through the budget process.
Yes, these, you've, you've.
Let's make that clear.
Yes, yes. These were discussed in, in the budget process and were part of the budget process, and they were finally put into the final budget.
So this is just including them into our list of positions.
Right.
Technically.
Okay.
Good. Jose Ponce, questions, comments, or concerns?
Yes, sir. I think Gloria means that, that, that every time you guys, I mean, I want to create a position, I, I feel that you guys should, should be notified, all of us. I, I, I mean, I, I understand, I mean, we, we do not, I mean, approve, I mean, positions, but I mean, we should, I mean, be notified. I think I talked to you once, I mean, before, that when I was in the council before, I mean, we were all, I mean, informed about what's happening, you know? Not, not only certain people on the council. And I think we, all of us, we should be informed, every single item. And you guys were not.
Mr. Ponce, Mr. Ponce, Mr. Ponce, I'm sorry, but everything is written for you.
Okay. I knew, I knew.
Everything, everything. All of these positions were in your booklet. All that information was written for you. For you to say that only certain people get this information? I'm sorry, but I, I differ in that opinion.
All right. Thank you.
Any more questions or concerns? If not, I will now take a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve and ratify resolution number 2142 as presented and declare an emergency.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor. There's a second. Allos in favor?
Aye.
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 Allos against?
Aye, I say.
So noted. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna, thank you, okay. We're gonna go ahead and go with item number 6D, discussion and possible action in all matters regarding ordinance number 401, an ordinance of the mayor, city council, and city of San Luis, establishing the Department of Parks and Recreation as the authority for the management of trees in the city of San Luis, and practices for the care of, of the trees and removal when, within the health, safety, and welfare interest of, of the residents, amending the city of San Luis code, repealing any conflicting provisions, providing for sub ability, and providing for penalties and declaring an emergency. Mr. Louis Galaviz?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. At this time, I do apologize, but I'd like to request a continuance for the work session for the seventh. There are some things that we, working with the other departments that we did look at that, that might need some minor changes because of the existing ordinances that we have in place. So I would request that if we could do a continuance for, for this item on the work session on the seventh, please.
Okay, so do you want to move it to the work session?
Yes, please. If I may.
Okay. No, of course, no, I, I think it's very important, especially we need to discuss this because, especially in a work session where, where everyone can ask questions and make sure the council understands. So, no. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I will now take a motion to move this to our next scheduled study session.
Second, Mayor.
There's a motion, there's a second. Allos in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Allos against? Motion carries. Thank you. We are now going to go on to number 6E, discussion and possible action in all matters regarding subdivision case number 2020-076F, a request by Riddell Holdings LLC, property owner, for the final plot approval for Riddell Condom Medium subdivision to be located on Lot B-1 and B-2 of the Riddell Plaza Shopping Center, San Luis Obispo. Mr. Jose Guzman?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. This is a request by Riddell Holdings for the approval of the final platform condominiums, a commercial subdivision. It will be two buildings, and each building will be six units. So it will be a total of twelve, twelve units. It was, this item was presented to the commission on the regular meeting of August 11, and they recommend an approval with conditions that the applicant addresses some of comments on the letter dated April 13. The applicant addresses most of the letter, of the comments, excuse me. So we're recommending approval with the, with the conditions on the letter dated September 23. The, I think the applicant representative is online, if you have any questions.
Jose, could you, could you read those, those, those comments or recommendations by, by city? What are they? You just, don't, don't just say they are. What are they?
Yeah, so the condominiums are subject to Arizona Vice Statutes Title 1333. So basically, there's a whole chapter of the state law that it's responsible for the condominiums' construction and maintenance and everything. So I added that condition just to make sure that they comply with all that state law. Number two is just a, a label of the, of the unit instead of suite. And that's because that's the way it's, it's referenced in the state statute. And number three is just regarding the open space and the landscaping requirements. I just wanted to make sure to be safe that the landscape and the parking will be reviewed once they submit for the building permit. And that's, that's all the, the conditions.
What about five? You have a five conditions there, parking shown.
That's, that's the parking. Because on the plan, they show the, the parking spaces. And I just wanted to make it clear that the parking spaces are based on the, on the use of the building. So whenever we receive a, a building application or business license, we will review the, the required parking spaces, and they might need more than what they have.
Make sure, make sure we work with them like, like we're working with every other business regarding the parking, because I believe we need to work on our, on our requirements for, for parking. I think we're, we're, we're sometimes asking too many parking spaces. But we, we definitely have to look at everything, okay? So not, not just, not just this one, but all businesses. It has been an issue, especially on Main Street. So it's something we have to look at, so. Okay, good. Najah, any, any, any comments, questions, please? I need to hear from you.
These comments that Mr. Guzman is talking about, we just received them this afternoon, brand new, they're still very hot. So I did not really get a chance to, to talk, to read them and understand them and discuss them. But you know, it's always been like that. We will go ahead and get together with Mr. Guzman, and we will iron them out. These are brand new comments that they were never mentioned before. And I wish if the city would implement a better system where they can get us stuff early and ahead of time. But I guess the COVID has been taking a big, huge toll out of everybody. Nobody's available to do anything anymore.
Well, Najah, to, to, to answer that comment, I will make sure, because this is, this is, this is way, 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 way unacceptable. And the thing is, you should, you should have plenty of time, so.
And we, we will, we will, we will get together with Mr. Guzman, and we will iron them out. I don't think that they are a big of a deal. I think they are misunderstanding on the part of the city because we took care of everything that the city have previously sent to us. And we were really under the impression as of today, as we do not have any outstanding issues. But Mr. Guzman sent us this today at the last minute. Maybe it's things that it's, that he's not understanding because all of this stuff he's talking about, it's been ironed out. The building is done. The building permit has been issued, and the building is done, and people have moved into the building. He's talking about building permits? It's done. We, we took the building permit a long time ago, and the building is done. It's built. You know? The landscaping is done. So I don't know. I think Mr. Guzman, because of the COVID, hasn't been out there to look at the project. You know, it's, everything is done. You know, we can't do any more to the project than it's already been done.
Yeah, it's done.
Mayor, if I may.
Please, Jose.
Najah, you, you have a condominium request for two buildings, and I believe only one, it's, it's built. You haven't started the other one. And that's why I added a condition, four and five. It just basically, just to be safe that you are aware that we will review the landscape and the parking requirements once you submit the second building permit.
Okay, I, I do understand. My apology. If, if you are talking about the second building, I do understand. And I, I, I don't have any problem with that.
Okay, thank you, Najah. Thank you, Jose. Thank you, Jose, for the clarification. Yeah, I just want to make sure that, yeah, no, we, the city house should be opening pretty soon, and we should be up and, and ready and, and make sure that none of this happens, if it does happen. So Najah, we, we will make sure. And yes, we will be, we will be establishing set criteria. And I, I can assure you that, okay?
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, may I say something?
Please, please do.
This is Olivia Jenkins, employee of Riddell Construction. And as Najah, in just two seconds, what Mr. Dye said. This, I had called and submitted a couple emails requesting feedback from planning and zoning to see if there was anything pending. So when this additional comments came in today at 3:30, it was really a surprise to us. And like Najah says, you know, we, if, if, if this was referring to the first building, it was a little bit unclear because building one has already been constructed. If he's referring to building two, well, that's understandable. And the other, so going back like to the number one item on this, on this comments, we've provided that information. If there's anything else pending that he needs for us to address. Item number one is very general. It's not specific as to what's missing from, from the ARS title. So if Mr. Guzman could be a little bit more specific, you know? And I think he was in a hurry because if you look at the top of the letter, he's referring to the, to the building, but then the cut and paste wasn't complete because it's referring also to Santa Cecilia 3. So I guess that, you know, I, we understand that COVID has taken, you know, toll on everybody, and not everybody's working full days or, or full time. But we would appreciate if, you know, a little bit more consideration is, is taken when, when they're responding, or if they could have a more timely response to, to our needs. City requires for the customer to comply with all the requirements and timelines. I would think it would only be fair that the city does the same with, with its constituents.
So noted, really, Olivia. And, and I will make sure, I will look into this personally.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open the floors to any comments or questions, concerns. Mario Buchanan Jr., comments, questions, or concerns?
No, Mayor, I just want to make sure that Najah and Olivia understand what the letter says. If not, we can move it over to our next meeting, and they can review it with more time.
Wow, so we get punished too?
No, it's not being punished, but if, if you're asking for more time.
I'm just making sure that you understand.
No, we, we don't, we need to, yeah, we need, we need to move forward, Mayor.
Okay, I just want to clarify because we're trying to be as transparent, as clear as we can, Najah, okay?
Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, I just want to mention that I spoke with the property owner, and she told me that she was, she was okay with all the conditions. So I don't know if there's a miscommunication.
No, there isn't. We're making up.
I talked to Ms. Riddell this afternoon.
No, Jose, it's, they're, they're making, they're just making comments. And the thing is, we, we accept comments. As, as government officials, we have to accept comments. And the thing is, we, we want to make sure that we streamline, and we make sure that we make, we make note, and we don't repeat them again. This is, this is repeatable things, and, and they shouldn't happen. So we will take care of it, okay? We will take care of it.
Yes, Mayor, and that, that's the only thing. We're making comments and an observation, that's all. And yes, Ms. Riddell told us that she had spoken to Mr. Guzman, and that she was okay with his comments. So we, like Najah said, we work with planning and zoning to get through, you know, the, the five additional comments that were presented to us today. That's not a problem.
Okay, thank you. We want to make sure we, we proceed, and I know we have to streamline this one. Thank you. Mario, very good comment. Thank you. Africa Luna Carrasco, comments, questions, or concerns?
No, Mayor, I just want to emphasize your statement that we'll look into it so we can have better practices in place than to have received the information the day of the meeting at 3:30, I think, is unacceptable.
It's unacceptable, yes.
Yes.
Thank you, so noted, Africa. Mathia Rosales, comments, questions, or concerns?
None, Mayor. Just what you guys are saying.
Thank you. Thank you. Vice Mayor, comments, questions, or concerns?
None, Mayor.
Thank you. Gloria Torres, comments, questions, or concerns?
The applicants agree with the condition, let's move forward.
Good. Good comment. Thank you. Thank you, Gloria. Jose Ponce, comments, questions, or concerns?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. If not, I will now take a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve subdivision case number 2020-076F, subject to the conditions that the applicant addressed the comments on the letter dated in September 23, 2020, to the planning and zoning department satisfaction.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. There's a second. Allos in favor?
Aye.
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 Allos against? Motion carries. Najah, Olivia, motion carries, okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night.
Okay, and let's see here. Summary of current events, events by Mayor, city council members, and our city staff present to ARS 38-431.02. Anything to say, Steph?
This, there'll be three executive sessions for the three appointment contracts. So that's what, that's why there's three different agenda items for this particular executive session.
We're not talking about executive session, Kay. We're talking about any special events or comments that people might have right now.
I'm so sorry.
It's okay, it's okay. So any council members? I just want to say that we are going to have our Founder's Day celebration October 1st. It's going to be your. It's gonna be, uh, your patio carne asada, it's gonna be a virtual. And I believe, uh, certain council members have already, uh, uh, we were already getting ready for it and it's gonna be exciting. So, uh, there's gonna be a lot of carne asadas occurring on October, October 2nd and I'm excited, I'm excited, uh, and I believe there's gonna be, uh, some type of raffle for the best, I don't know how carne asada or, uh, but samples will be taken, okay? So just, this, uh, that might influence the prices. So, uh, we'll see what happens, okay? So I'm excited, so, uh, uh, we're gonna have Founder's Day, carne asada, some patio, or backyard patio or something like that, so I'm excited, so. Uh, let's see here, and, uh, that's so far what I have. Uh, I believe, uh, we should be getting a, a, uh, a summary or what's going, what's gonna happen with the, uh, what's going on with our census. Uh, we only have two more events, uh, scheduled and, uh, let's see what happens, I wanna hear from Steph, so. Uh, 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 let's see here, Francia?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members. So with the census, we have three remaining events, which are, um, the one happening Thursday, uh, Sol Avenue, 1420 Sol Avenue. Monday, we're gonna be at Jocabeo Park. And then Tuesday, we're gonna finish it off here at City Hall with our final event. And then the census, uh, big sweepstake will be taking place October 1st, um, virtually. As for the census count right now, we are at 43.2%. Uh, we do have a lot of good outcome, uh, people coming out to our census events. Um, obviously, we, we wanna encourage more people to come out and we are, um, reaching out to businesses to help us push the business, to pu, push the census events and help them promote their business as well. Giving, um, free meals for, um, local businesses.
Okay, very good. Forty-three percent, so we were 37, so we, uh, we have invested time and effort. Uh, if someone tells me from the public that the city is not doing enough, uh, I will, I will, I will, it's, I'll tell them I'll differ on, on their opinion. Uh, we have been working, city has been working, council has been working, the state has been working. Everyone's been trying to work, uh, to get our census numbers up. So right now, it's up to the residents. Absolutely no excuse, you can do it by phone, you paper, you can do it, I mean, we're helping you, you use your iPad. Uh, I mean, anything, anything, and, and, and almost everyone has, uh, a smartphone. And so, uh, um, there's a lot of things you can do, you can even do it by phone, there's actually no excuse. So when our numbers, uh, when our numbers come down and, uh, we, we don't have enough reduced lunches or free lunches for our kids, uh, I just, I just, I just wanna, I, I just wanna remember today's date to tell them now that, uh, only 42%, 43% of the population participated in the census. We have invested a lot of time and effort and money. Uh, and unfortunately, the federal government, uh, before, they used to do a lot more, uh, uh, postal, we, uh, they, they think it's postal information. But unfortunately, uh, most communities, except for ours, uh, since we're the second largest P O Box community in the whole nation, uh, we don't get a lot, we didn't get a lot of information, so unfortunately, so it's a combination of things. Uh, and, but I've seen this also in Texas, Texas is also hurting. Uh, so this is a nation, nationwide and, and, uh, uh, it's one of those things, but I just wanna clarify that the information is out there. The information is out there, there's actually no excuse for you not to say you haven't heard anything from the census. That's all I can say.
Mayor?
Please.
If I may, first I'd like to thank, uh, the Planning and Zoning Department for heading, uh, the Censo Banquetero events, they haven't, they have been really well organized and, uh, some of them very well attended. Uh, I also wanna thank the Parks and Rec Department, the Police Department, the Fire Department and, um, IT and Public Works for helping us with setting up aside with all the volunteers from the other departments that have assisted us in those events. Um, it, it has been some, some of the days have been hot and humid and we've had long, you know, workdays, not complaining, but, uh, they have been successful, we have been able to get in touch with people, get a lot of people, um, counted, um, trying to defeat the undercount. Um, so there's no worse of how thankful and how, um, great is to see the, all the staff working together in order to achieve a common goal. We're here to serve the public and I think, you know, the Censo Banqueteros really shows that. So I just wanted to thank all the employees and, and, and you for supporting this.
Oh, thank you, and, and, and Censo Banquetero, I mean, it's, it's, um, the rea, the reaction we had, uh, in, in La Sección Afer was really good. Over, over ninety-something plus families signed the, people that didn't sign, actually signed. So that's ninety-plus families that actually signed their census, so. Um, uh, congratulate everyone, thank you for the effort, thank you for everyone who has participated. I know staff has been working very hard. Uh, and, uh, we are working on Cihau, Evignesca, uh, I mean, all the departments have been, I've seen Fire, Police, everyone's been seeing there and, and hopefully we can, we can compensate you with a couple of days off, okay? So we are working on that, I know that they was working on that and the section is working on that, so, uh, you guys need to rest and I know you guys are working almost every day, so gracias, thank you so much, uh, for the great effort that everyone's doing, including council. And so, uh, kudos to you guys and, and, uh, we, I'm very proud of our city, I'm very proud of our, our city employees and thank you.
Mayor, I would like to make a comment in regards to the Censo Banquetero. I just wanna congratulate, um, the employees, I think I seen someone from of just about every department participating, so it's a team effort. Um, and we, they do this all for, for the city, of course. We're trying to promote the census and I think we're getting a good response. So congratulations to every department that has been participating, I've attended like four of them. So I was just out there being your guys' cheerleader, so continue your great efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor, and, and actually, I would like to thank you, Vice Mayor, you've been ba, basically in almost all the events. Uh, and, and thank you for making a difference. Uh, it really, it really is, uh, uh, when people see council members and, and they see the mayor out there, it really does make a difference. And the thing is, uh, I really appreciate, uh, I seen, uh, Ponce there also and I believe Africa was there on the first and, it, it really makes a difference, guys, and I really appreciate it and, uh, we're here to serve our community and right now, we need them, we need the numbers, we need, we, they need to be counted. And so, uh, no, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, good. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and go with the, uh, before I go with the vote to hold an executive session, Kay, um, I would like to move this item, uh, for two weeks. I wanna make sure that every single council member has time to read the contracts and, uh, make sure that they understand what they're gonna be approving. And so, uh, I'm gonna move a motion to move this item to a next scheduled meeting.
Okay.
Motion, I have to say?
Yes, I'm asking for a motion to move this item for, for the next scheduled meeting.
A mo-
Second.
There's a motion, there's a, there's a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion carries, so we're gonna go and, uh, I wanna make sure that everyone reads everything, I wanna make sure everyone understands what they're, what they're going through. I really don't wanna hear that we're, we're being forced to do anything. I wanna make sure that everyone has all the right information. Okay, so, uh, motion carries, we're gonna, we're gonna, this is gonna be in two more weeks. And, uh, I'm gonna go ahead, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a, there's a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion carries, I say without noises, guys, thank you so much.
Good night.